All right, good evening, everyone. We show that it's six o'clock. We'll take roll call.
Everyone's present.
I have everyone here. We'll call the Wabash City School Board meeting for Monday, October 2nd, 2023 to order. Will everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin each Wabash City School Board meeting by reading the Wabash City Schools' mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in the global community. Like to welcome everybody here tonight. Do we have any recognitions?
Yes, tonight, we have two different groups. We are going to start today is National Custodian Appreciation Day. So we have our building administrators here, and they are going to introduce their custodial staff so we can all say thank you for the job that they do each and every day for our students and our schools. So we'll start with Kathy.
Hi, I have custodian here, Lauren Horr, and she does a fabulous job, if you complain. And she's got a lot of things to bring up. And we also have Mrs. Gibson, who was our nighttime custodian, and she wasn't able to make it here tonight, but we also appreciate her, too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How long have you worked for us?
Fifteen years, almost sixteen.
Okay.
Tim Dillon is our head custodian at OJ Neighbors. We have worked together for seven years now, and Tim is outstanding at what he does. And not only does he take care of the buildings, he takes care of the kids and staff and makes sure we're all safe and happy. Kim and Steve could not be here with us tonight, but they also do a great job in the evening. We appreciate them very much.
Thank you.
Got to get up, high school and middle school. So I've got Bobby Evans and Stacy Gibson, Doug Harland, and Dave Williams. Gosh, Dave's been with us forever. As long as, longer than I've been here, that's for sure. And Bobby came in about the same time I did. Twenty-eight years. Stacy's new with us. Doug, I don't know how long.
Working on nine.
Working on nine years, okay. Well, these guys take care of both the middle school and the high school floor, so really large facilities. You know, I was talking to Bobby the other day, what I really appreciate about this group is they're really just nice people, and they engage our teachers every time they see our teachers, always taking care of everything. When they see a teacher in a classroom in the evening, I always ask them if they need anything or if they're still on the road, okay? So I'm really blessed to have this crew. They work really hard, and we love working alongside them and trying to help each other as best we can, so really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Dave, forty?
Six.
Forty-six.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Sarah Degadio and Kim Hodson, both here to share a little bit about the recent Spanish short-term group that came.
Thank you so much for letting us speak tonight. We're excited to talk about our short-term exchanges, and Kim has been a vital part of this as well, so Kim and I will kind of tag teams a little bit. But this is one of really two exchanges for this year. We tried to just do a fall and a spring last year. We kind of added an extra one in there, but our ideal is that we do a fall and a spring, that we have an opportunity to bring these exchanges in. So this group was twenty-three students and two chaperones, which also was a really large group for us. We might have taken on a little more than we would care to do in the future, so I think we'll talk about that a little bit. But I think the majority of it, though, it was a great turnout, had great experiences that our students did for theirs. So I'll let Kim kind of share about the actual, the ad hoc exchange.
Sure. So I think it's repeating twenty-three students, two chaperones, twenty-one host families, because we had some blended ones over Labor Day weekend, and people had plans already, and just the logistics of it all, and twenty-six student ambassadors. And there's some of our families there. That, the, it's very small. I realize that is a message from Ware Weaver. He sent me from his student, and basically Raquel, which there were two Raquels. I don't remember if it was Tom Raquel or Short Raquel. There were two Raquels, two Daniels, two Lethias, and two Eliseas. So basically, she's thanking them for their flexibility and the activities that they were able to do, and made it easier for hanging out with your friends and create unforgettable friendships that are very important to me now. However, I must also mention the time I spent with you and your beautiful family. You are wonderful. Thank you for integrating me both in family plans and dinners at the Honeywell Center. I appreciate you being so nice to me during your stay. And then she says specific things about each person in the family. And then the reply back from Ware was, Raquel, it was our pleasure. We are so glad about the friendships and connections you made during your stay, along with the memories. Appreciate your adaptability during your stay with us and thankful for the opportunity to meet you and get to know you. Safe travels home. As you reunite family, start school, including better school food and more interesting classes. But that just shows the impact, and that is not Raquel, I'm not sure there. That's Maria and Harley Zemmer. But the impact on both sides that we, this program made. On the reflection nights, when those happen, which several of you were lucky enough to go to, the flowing of tears is free, and I didn't host the family this time, and it's hard not to cry and see all that. The next one, the events that they did. So first thing they started off with was a trip to Fort Wayne, because I would say a third of them did not have their luggage, which they handled that so much better than I did. So they started out with that. They had a tour of Wabash, Huntington, I think this is what they did, Huntington University and the Grayville County Fair. I did get to go to the Notre Dame campus tour and soccer game with them. And then they went to Chicago. Those were their field trips. And then what they did at Wabash was shadowing our students. And I don't think either one of you were this time, but these two have been student ambassadors in the past, Abby and Kale, and they're great at it. But some of the kids were able to go to Heartland, and they did this programs. I know what they did were welding, computer science, and culinary, and possibly some others. And when an additional Spanish student asked to go out to Heartland, I think that's a new experience for them, so they were very interested in that. Hadley had her, Bianca, Guaca, go on her internship, so that's another interesting experience. Classes that I know they had require my world history class and my AP world history class in chemistry. And I know one of the girls participated in choir and sang. Several kids observed band. I had several kids get, when we did a group project, some, they attempted, and they all, they, some kids were not as proficient in English as others, and some more willing to jump in than others. But the ones that did, their English was amazing, and of course, being a history teacher, I counted them on. It happened to be perfect, because we were talking about Muslims in Spain, so I pressed them on what happened, and they were able to share their experience and what they knew, so it was perfect for me. They went to several athletic events, football, soccer, and volleyball for sure, and then training. That's, they talked about going to training, which is practice. So they went to volleyball training and soccer training for sure, and cheerleading. One of the girls mentioned she wanted the cheerleading experience. Two of the short-term students did the cheerleading, and then our long-term Spanish exchange student is a cheerleader. The homecoming dance was a big hit and success. A couple of the kids went to OJ, and then five or six, which is on the next page, they did a presentation to the Hupur dual immersion class. And I had asked Senora, I think it is, and she wanted them to present on the differences between American school and Spanish school. And then one of the host families had a big gathering over Labor Day, which was fun. And then in the community, two boys did the dance-a-dam. We had two kickball teams that participated in Founder's Day, and the homecoming parade was a big hit. And then that first Friday they were here was First Friday, and so I would need to see a bunch of kids there. So why do we do this, or as Sarah's the brains behind all of this? But it's pictures like this. So the picture on the left, those are two Spanish kids. This group did not know each other. So they had the double blessing of making American friends, but then they made Spanish friends, even the lone couple. So, and this is the kickball team, one of the kickball teams, and the two girls on the left are the Haynes sisters, and then Tricia, and then the Spanish kids. And then the next slide, those are the cheerleaders on the float for the homecoming parade. And then I don't know if you took the picture on the left, but it's a great picture of Luthia putting her marker in at the, is it Roarish thing? Visit Wabash County, where they're from. And then the last picture is the whole group at Notre Dame. And then I did add, I mean, it's a great program, but it's not, oh, these are, these are some of the thanking of the basing, thanking staff, the host families, and the student ambassadors. And then, I don't know if the challenges, such a program is not without its challenges. I think because I tagged that on in the morning, it might not be there. But some of the challenges are finding host families, especially with a big group like that. And this is the third homestay in the last year, so it is a commitment, and sometimes it's like we're exhausting the supply, but I think we can reach new people and people without students, because I brought up high school students, and we had a great experience with Japanese kids and people with little kids, homeschool families who are involved this time. The overlapping holidays is a challenge. Keeping students engaged in school day is a challenge. That's something that we can work on, because Argentina's coming for five weeks, and if it's a class you're interested in, it's great. If you are in calculus and you're student ambassadors in Algebra I, that gets a little old. So developing some variety and finding programs that maybe it's not just following a kid around for five weeks, that is something I think we can develop. And like I said, they really, they want to see things that they can't get at home, like Heartland, like the Mr. Eiler's class, art to a degree. So that's another focus. And then the last major challenge was the transportation. With a big group, you have to either have a big school bus, and that's hard to get drivers. It's, the timing is awkward with the school routes, so then you use the activity buses, which are great, because more people can drive those, but then you have to have local drivers. So I didn't want to end on the challenges, because it was such a great experience, and the effect on the international students coming here is, and those are lifelong relationships. Our Japanese student, her birthday was last week, and we still communicate and talk, and it's, it brings a lot here, too, to the kids. The kids are, some of these, you know, some kids are going to grow up and do amazing things. Some kids are going to do amazing things but never leave Wabash. So it gives them a chance to see the world without leaving Wabash.
I will say, unwavering challenges, though, I think we've kind of talked about, we'll try to keep these groups smaller in the future, ones that we can pretty much fit on a mini bus with one driver most of the time. Other than our Japanese group that comes twice a year, or two, twice, every two years, that group will likely be around thirty-five to forty kids every time, but we can well prepare in advance for them. They are actually just here visiting with us and making plans for the future. And not every homestay is a swing and a home run. You know, we've had some that we've moved around that wasn't, you know, exactly the right fit. Thankfully, some of these short-term ones are not very long, so you don't have to worry about that for too long. But we do our best to work with the families and the students as well to try to alleviate that, because by no means we want to be a bad experience for either. But as she mentioned, homestays are always something that we're always looking for, so we're thinking of new ways to help bring in new homestay families. And so if we don't want to burn out the ones that we currently have, we want to make sure we're opening the opportunities to others. So those who have hosted, be on the lookout, because we'll be asking you for some testimonies and sharing your experiences with others to help us pull in new families that would enjoy this experience. In fact, this last one, we did have a family put a whole wall up in their house so they could host. We had people driving from Fort Wayne that were bringing, one of our teachers that comes back and forth, he hosted, moved his baby into his room for three weeks, and he can do it. So it's amazing the lengths that some families have gone to be able to host, and we just really appreciate everything that the school has done and the families have done, even the school board as well, to support these type of opportunities. Do you have any questions?
Are there any plans for our students? I know the Japanese students have traveled, but is there, I mean, we're doing this with Spain, we're doing it with Argentina. Are we looking elsewhere? What's the future?
So the school in Argentina that we received students from last January and that will come again this January is a private Catholic school, and they have actually requested a direct exchange. And so they are interested in us to move students to them as well for short-term like this. We have had, actually, I think in the last month, I've had three different students from the high school ask me about how they can go abroad, how our students can go travel now, not just to visit the students that they met, but actually spend some time abroad. I said, there's just certain dates I need to hear in Wabash, but other than that, we can make it work. So I actually got off the call with a partner of ours the other day, who's got opportunities in Belgium, Norway, possibly France, but some other European countries that she said are very open and very cost-effective for our students. So it could be really amazing. I think it's been a semester abroad for under five thousand with a homestay and everything.
One of the Spanish students that came this time, her mother runs a school, and we, we all know who it is.
Yeah.
And it's fairly expensive, though. But I forwarded to Ms. Geibl, and I had posted some flyers, and it's a summer program, but I think it's fairly expensive.
It's like an intensive, or a Spanish program, if you want to come and learn the language. Yeah, there are, so we are talking with other partners to help develop that, that two-way connection. We would love to see that, especially for the new language students as they get older and want to travel abroad. Ideally for them, it would make sense in South America because of the school schedule. We were able to make a partnership somewhere down there versus in Europe because of our scheduling. That way they could go during our summertime, so they go with school in summer in South America, and then they could come here during our school. So we'll see. But yes, that's definitely something we're working on.
Dr. Sibley, can our guys go back to work?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
I wanted to say thank you to you two for putting this together, and Mrs. Hodson for being the liaison. It's been very helpful. I thought this last time went incredibly smooth, because we did both, and I really appreciate both of it and how you guys put this together and make it work. So appreciate the effort.
Yeah, I'd second that. There's a lot of logistics and planning that goes into pulling something like this off, so thank you for all the, all the time and effort put into this.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
All right. Next on the agenda, we do have a revision. We need to approve revision, item C three, which is accept the resignation of Taylor Burns as a paraprofessional at LH Carpenter effective September 28th, 2023. A motion and a second on the revision. All those in favor of approving the revision to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is revised. At this point, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on an agenda item tonight? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes of our September 18th, 2023 meeting. Claims, we do have a donation of a thousand dollars from Kathy Geibl to Wabash High School to be used to buy paper, and there are no financials at this meeting. I would accept a motion on the consent agenda. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We'd like to thank Mrs. Geibl for her generous donation to the high school for paper.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, October 23rd, 2023, at Wabash Middle School Cafeteria, 150 Colrain Street, Wabash, Indiana, at 6:30 PM. We have a few items of communications. There's no old business, new business. We have a Wabash High School Student Council update.
All right, you're up. When you go to screen mirroring, does it show up? It's, it's that direct NG air server? Oh, then, yeah, because we might not be able to get you connected to the Wi-Fi, so if you just want to come up here and stand, and you can just kind of walk us through it. We'll have you introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Kale Richardson. I'm the senior class president at Wabash High School.
And I'm here to stand, I'm the junior class vice president.
So we are here to do a presentation over what's going on at Wabash High School currently with the student council. So I feel like September has gone by really fast, and we've had quite a few events. So starting with our foreign exchange students came. And for me, I feel like that was a very positive event that happened. I actually got to make a friend, and I hope to be able to keep on talking. Also, some of the longer-staying students, I'm somewhat starting to become friends with one of them, and so that was a good experience for all of us at Wabash High School. Our next event is homecoming. Seniors won the homecoming competition, and also our homecoming king and queen was Natalie Adams and Grant Ford. And I think this year's pep rally, everyone had a lot more fun, and it was, we had a little bit more entertaining things to do.
So Harvard's go-off, it was just this Saturday. It's always a fun experience. I always love getting to go and dance with all the kids from our school, and it's always just fun.
And then last week, we had our college go week for the seniors. We had both of our guidance counselors and every advisory during both second and first advisory, and they worked one-on-one with most of us to get college applications in so that we can start on our journey after high school. And then we have our teacher highlights for the, this month. We had Treska, Oswald, Hilton, and Mendoc. Next, we have what's coming up.
And so first is our fish food drive, which is coming up in November. We have the sad blood drive, fall break, SATs and the PSATs, and also the end of the line weeks.
Do you guys have any questions?
How many days of school left?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the next one. We have 135 days left. Anything else?
Thank you for presenting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next on the agenda, approve revised resolution to transfer amounts from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund. The resolution reads, "Resolution to transfer amounts from Education Fund to the Operations Fund recurring on a monthly basis, whereas the school, whereas the Board of School Trustees is the governing body of Wabash City Schools Corporation, Wabash County, Indiana, and whereas HB 1009 required the governing body of each school corporation to establish an education fund for the payment of expenses allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5, and whereas HB 1009 required the governing body of each school corporation to establish an operations fund for the payment of expenses that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5, and whereas HB 1009 requires that distributions of tuition support be received in the education fund, therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Trustees authorizes the treasurer of Wabash City Schools Corporation to transfer up to 15% of the net monthly tuition support amount from the education fund to the operations fund to reimburse the operations fund for expenses that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code 20-42.5 for the period of one month starting October 2023. This resolution was duly made, seconded, and adopted this second day of October 2023. I would accept a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Motion and second, discussion.
We are allowed to transfer up to 15% from education to operations, and as we've worked through this year, we're constantly monitoring our finances, and we have realized that the amount that we are currently transferring will put us over the 15%. So this revised resolution will enable us to drop the amount that we transfer for the final three months of the year, which will keep us below that 15% mark.
Just for clarification, operations fund pays for transportation?
Custodial, maintenance, central office, utilities, insurance.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion regarding the resolution? If not, all those in favor of approving the revised resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, accept resignations from the following classified staff. Paula Seeley as cafeteria employee effective September 14th, 2023. Angie Klein as Wabash City School bus driver effective September 29th, 2023. Taylor Burns as a paraprofessional LH Carpenter effective September 28th, 2023.
So moved.
Motion, second, discussion.
We would like to thank these ladies for their service to Wabash City Schools. I would like to mention Ms. Klein. I believe she was a bus driver for 22 years, and so we are sad to see her go. She will be greatly missed.
All those in favor of accepting the resignations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approve Dr. Sibley's attendance at the District Administration Superintendent's Summit in Naples, Florida, December 12th through the 15th, 2023. We have a motion and a second, discussion.
I have been selected to attend the District Administration Superintendent Summit in Naples. They only accept 70 superintendents for each of these summits. The summit will allow me to learn how leaders across the nation are conquering similar challenges that we face here in Wabash. There is no cost to the district, as the district administration covers the registration, the hotel, food, and travel expenses.
Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor of approving Dr. Sibley's attendance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, I want to thank all the families that hosted our Spanish students. I think we had two board members that did that. This is just a great opportunity for the visiting students and for our families to learn about other cultures. We would also like to congratulate OJ Neighbors on being named Indiana's first elementary banner school through the Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools National Recognition Program, and we will have a group from OJ at our next board meeting to just share a little bit more about this amazing recognition. Our fall sports are heading into the last week or so of their seasons. We have senior nights coming up soon, and sectionals are right around the corner, so we want to say good luck to our athletes and coaches as they wrap up another season. And finally, as we head into our final few months of the year, we are monitoring our finances and cash flow. Earlier this year, we took out a tax anticipation warrant. We will again be doing this in 2024. However, the amount we feel that we need will be almost half of what last year's warrant was. We have started the application process. We have started the application process, and we will be bringing a resolution to the board to authorize the warrant, and that will most likely happen in November.
Any questions for Dr. Sibley? All right. Items from chief business officer.
First, again, just want to thank all of our custodians. I mean, they do a great job. And we, we have one and a half at Carpenter, we have three at OJ, and we only have six or five at the high school, middle school combined. So those guys have done a great job. They work extremely hard. They, they do a great job for our building, so I want to thank them. And then I want to congratulate our boys cross-country team who won the TRC Saturday. So won our first conference championship of the school year. They ran a great race, had four, five boys make all conference. So now it's a little weird. We have like a break before the sectionals, so the sectionals not until the fourteenth. So they got a little time between them. But just want to congratulate Coach Evans and the boys on winning the TRC.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Stone? All right. Items from administrators, anybody?
Well, always done. PSAT and SAT school day next week, so that's a huge day for, for our school corporation. Largely because not only do you need good SAT scores if you're going to move on to post-secondary, but PSAT scores qualify our students for dual-credit classes at Wabash High Schools. So that's a big day for us, and a lot of work is put on, put in on that effort by our guidance counselors. All of our teachers are serving sub-capacity and preparing those exams as the day goes on. I think I have hallway duty of official, official role, so that's good. It's come day two, so really pleased. We have four hundred and ninety-five students at Wabash High School, which is, I can't remember when we've been that large, and feel really good about our culture and our programming. It feels like that's attracting kids to, to Wabash. We're really pleased to have them. We're going to a great year, great start to the school year.
Do freshmen and sophomores take the PSAT, and then juniors and seniors the SAT? Is that how?
In fact, our eighth graders take the PSAT as well. So there is a PSAT eight and I, we don't do the eight and I PSAT. We do the PSAT MNSQT, which is National Merit Qualifier Test, something like that. Which is sort of the real PSAT. Because we're a really college high school, we really think it's important to be able to track that data as we, as we move forward. So we've really been able to identify what is a good score on an eighth grade year and a ninth grade year, our tenth grade year, moving up into the SATs to see if our kids are on track. But also correlates, some of that data correlates with what we do on NWEA as well. So we can tell if our, if our kids are on track to be able to take the SAT in their first opportunity, which is the spring of their junior. We've had really great success on PSAT. We're pleased with last year's juniors, so this year's seniors. We led the county in veterans based reading and writing on the SAT in the spring. So congratulations to our students and also our English department and all of our teachers at the emphasize evidence base reading and writing, which is part of the nonfiction work that our entire school works on.
How long have we been doing the PSAT? I know we've had the SAT day for a long time. Have we always done the PSAT, or is that something relatively new?
It's, it's the same requirement on the tenth grade year. And the one, about the same time that we started SAT, we pulled in ninth graders on the PSAT as well. And then probably four, five years ago, we brought in eighth graders to that. So, so our kids, they have the opportunity to take the PSAT then four times, and the SAT twice. State pays for the SAT in the spring of the junior year, and then we're the SAT school day school. So we do our own administration and follow the scene.
Thank you. All right. Items from other visitors. All right. Items from board members.
Everybody I want to thank left, but I just want to thank the custodians and Sarah and Kim for all their hard work. I know that is a hard program to put together so successfully. And the high school students for coming and speaking as always. That's all I have.
Steven?
Couple things. Ms. Klein, she was awesome. So we're going to miss her. I appreciate all she did for all those years as far as plus chiver. College Go Week, I know it's a big week for you guys. Your guiding staff does a lot, and I know you guys do a lot, so thank you. We offer opportunities that other schools don't or can't, but we give our students some opportunities that a school our size is exciting to see. And then unified sports stuff, yeah. For schools I go to, I see the banners, and those banners do mean something when you walk in. So that's pretty exciting, especially to be the inaugural ones for the state of Indiana. That's pretty exciting. So I know you guys did a lot of work into it. I know you have good helpers there too, so.
Rhonda?
Nothing that hasn't been said.
Jason?
Same here. All the thunder's been stolen, so.
All right. Well, I, I want to mention, I just want to tell a quick story on the custodians. I remember being in high school thirty years ago at Wabash. I was sitting in Mr. Root's history class, and one of the custodians was paged over the intercom. And I remember him saying, without our custodians, our schools would fall apart. I mean, I remember, that made an impact on me thirty years ago that he would make that. I mean, I remember it today. But there's a lot of truth to that. Without our custodial staff taking care of our buildings for us, a lot would go into disrepair, and we wouldn't be able to have the nice facilities that we have for our students and, and our community. So a big thank you to all they do. It, it doesn't always get mentioned as often as it should, but, but they are the backbone of what we do with our buildings and our ground. So thank you to them. And then I want to thank the board members that were able to attend the fall conference last week. Wabash has historically, at least while I've been on the board, had a very good representation there from the board. It's taken time away from your, your normal job and your families to go down to Indianapolis for a couple of days and learn about what's taking place at the state with other school boards and superintendents. And not all districts have the representation that Wabash historically has had. So I want to thank everybody for taking the time to go out and down there and, and be committed to that. So thank you. And with that, I would accept a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.